Welcome to the February 15th School Board Meeting. The meeting is now in session. Would you all please rise for the presentation of the colors by the Career Center Air Force, JROTC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would all please remain standing for a moment. Before we begin our recognitions, we want to take a moment to remember and honor the victims of the shooting at the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida. We are all deeply saddened by this event, and I would like to ask for a moment of silence Thank you. We have a very special evening with four recognitions. First, in honor of Black History Month, the Carlin Springs Chorus will sing the Black American National Anthem. Pam Farrell, our Supervisor of Visual and Performing Arts, will introduce the group. While Pam comes to the podium, I would like to invite my colleagues to take a seat in the front row to enjoy the performance. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the School Board, Dr. Murphy, Executive Leadership Team, and guests. Tonight, we have a student performance by Carlin Springs Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Claire Ruggiero. I would also like to thank Ms. Melinda Phillips, the Assistant Principal of Carlin Springs, who's here with us tonight. In celebration of Black History Month, the students will be performing "Lift Every Voice and Sing," which was publicly performed first as a poem, as part of a celebration of Abraham Lincoln's birthday on February 12, 1900. It was performed by 500 schoolchildren at the segregated Stanton School in Jacksonville, Florida. Its principal, James Weldon Johnson, wrote the words to introduce his honored guest, Booker T. Washington, and the poem was set to music soon after. In 1919, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People dubbed it the Negro National Anthem for its power in voicing the cry for liberation and affirmation for African-American people. Please join me in welcoming the Carlin Springs Chorus, under the direction of Ms. Claire Ruggiero, and please stand for the Black National Anthem.
We are the fifth group members of the Carlin Springs Chorus. Thank you all so much for having us perform for you tonight. We are very excited and honored to be here.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring.
Ring with the harmonies of liberty.
Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies.
Let it resound loud as the rolling seas.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty.
Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies.
Let every sound loud as the rolling seas.
Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us.
Sing a song full of the hope that the present has taught us.
As in the rising sun, our new day begun.
Let us march on till victory is won.
Stony the road we trod, bitter the chasing rod.
Thought in the daysland hope unborn had died.
Yet with the steady beat, our weary feet come to the place for which our fathers died.
We have come over the way that the tears have been watered.
We have come, trawling our paths through the flood of the slaughter.
Out from the gloomy past, till now we stand at last.
We're going back clean, of our bright starings cast.
If the board members could join the chorus here, we'll take some photos.
Good job.
Ms. Phillips, do you want to come up too? If the board members could join the chorus here, we'll take some photos. Okay, on to our next recognition, which will be presented by Ms. Farrell, to honor students who were selected for statewide musical groups. Ms. Farrell, and I'll help you with certificates.
So we have three Arlington Public Schools High School students that were accepted into the All-Virginia Jazz Groups. A performance was given at the Virginia Music Educationers Association Conference. The prestigious ensemble available to approximately 40 students around the state who are accepted into this ensemble, so it's pretty amazing. Not all of our students are here tonight, but I'm going to start with recognizing all of them and then go to the folks that are here. So we have Huck Brown from HB Woodlawn. We have, I'm sorry, Huck Brown from Washington Lee. We also have Zach Neese from Yorktown, and we have Sam Calacino from Washington Lee Jazz Ensemble. Is Sam here? Okay. So then we are going to move on to the four APS High School seniors who were selected as members of the 2017 Virginia Music Educators Senior Honor Chorus. The audition took place at Longwood High School. The choir is open to only the top 125 singers from around Virginia, and it's the highest honor a choral student can attain during their high school career. So in recognition, Grace Fisher from Washington Lee. I also want to recognize Mr. Greg Robertson, who's here tonight, Principal of Washington Lee. We have James Nicholson, Yorktown High School tenor, Jordy Perry from HB Woodlawn, and with us tonight, we have Will Granger from HB Woodlawn. So Will, you want to come up?
There's one.
Wow, that's great. That's all we got. We had flu hit us hard this week, so we had quite a few folks who couldn't make it.
Okay, and next, in recognition of National School Counseling Week, we will have a very special presentation by some of our students and their counselors. Pam McClellan, Supervisor of Counseling Services, will introduce them. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for recognizing National School Counseling Week. Tonight, we're going to highlight our elementary students and counselors. The students are going to be teaching you the second-step strategies for calming down. This is taught at all grade levels in all elementary schools. So at this time, I'm going to invite the counselors and the students to come up, and the counselors will introduce themselves and what school they're from, and they will either introduce their student or let their student introduce themselves.
Good evening. I'm Mary Beth McCormick from Nottingham Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Hancock from Claremont Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Arani Escalante, also Claremont Elementary.
Hello, I'm Gina Rocco from McKinley Elementary School.
Joel Phillips from Barcroft Elementary.
And I'm Heather Davis, also from McKinley.
So before our students show us the lesson, here's the poster we use. It is "Stop, Name Your Feeling: Calm Down."
And as you'll see from our students' demonstration, this can be individualized to the student and customized to different situations.
I'm a first grader in Mr. O'Brien's class at McKinley Elementary School. When I don't have enough time to do something and I lose my temper, I recognize a memory. Then I ask or try to find a small, quiet place in the room until I feel better.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hello, my name is Colin Lee. I am in second grade at Ms. Weiss's class at McKinley Elementary School. Sometimes I have strong feelings when other kids get picked up at an extended day before I do. First, first, I use my stop signal, which is "Come on." Then, I name my feeling. I feel jealous and scared. Then I calm down by using belly breaths and distracting myself by playing. And now that hasn't happened in a really long time.
Hello, my name's Anatoly. First, I use my stop signal, "Hold on." Then, I name my feeling, "I feel angry." Then I calm down, I take a big breath.
Hello, hello, my name's Mackenzie, and I go to Claremont Elementary School. Sometimes, to calm down, all you need to do is breathe in through your nose, and your stomach should be out. When you breathe out through your mouth, your stomach should be in. That's how you calm down.
Hi, my name is Delaney Sinton from Nottingham Elementary. Another way I calm down is use positive self-talk. You've got this.
So these are part of the unit we do on emotion regulation. So I want to thank the families that are here. Could you wave or stand up? And then also, we have some principals here, if you could just wave. I don't know if you noticed, but there was a Colin, Colin, and Colin.
Yes, recall, that is true.
Thanks, everybody.
"You've Got This," that's what I heard. All right, everyone, it's my honor to recognize the Principal of Key School, Dr. Marjorie Myers, tonight. Yes, give it up. I'd like to invite Dr. Myers to join me at the podium, please. Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. We are also honored to have three special guests from the Embassy of Spain with us to help us celebrate Dr. Myers. They are Inga Bernado Puello, Alberto Salinaro Garcia, and Counselor of Education, Maria Jose Fabre Gonzalez. Welcome to Arlington Public Schools. So happy to have you guys here. Last month, Dr. Myers was bestowed with the Officer's Cross of the Order of Isabel la Católica in a ceremony hosted by the Ambassador of Spain, Pedro Morenas. The Officer's Cross is an honor awarded to those who have made an extraordinary contribution to the relationship of friendship and cooperation between Spain and the American community. Dr. Myers was recognized for her exceptional contribution to promoting the Spanish language here in the U.S. Her work has had a tremendous impact on the lives of hundreds of students and has contributed to strong relations between the U.S. and Spain. Dr. Myers joined Arlington Public Schools in 1995 as Principal of Key School, also known as Escuela Key, soon after the Spanish immersion program was introduced there. Now, Escuela Key is recognized as one of the pioneer schools in the U.S. for teaching Spanish, thanks in large part to your efforts. With Dr. Myers' support, Arlington has expanded its immersions programs to several other schools and now provides a variety of opportunities to students to learn Spanish, from kindergarten all the way through high school. Through her efforts, Dr. Myers has also helped deliver high-quality bilingual learning to the community beyond APS. She has presented at conferences across the country and in Europe about the benefits of bilingual education. She has also supported visiting professor and language assistant programs in the U.S. and Spain, programs that have educated many passionate new Spanish teachers. Felisa Dades, Dr. Myers, and I believe you have a few words you want to say? Okay. Oh, we can.
It really has all been such a great honor. I want to begin again by thanking Maria Jose Fabre Gonzalez from the Embassy of Spain, who nominated me for this incredible award. Also, I want to thank them for showing up, Maria Jose, Inga, and Alberto for being here, and my other good friends in the audience. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Murphy, and the School Board, for recognizing me for this very special award from the country of Spain. As was said, on January 17th, at the home of the Ambassador of Spain, Mr. Pedro Morenas, I was awarded the Officer's Order of the Cross of Isabel the Catholic, La Cruz de Isabel la Católica. The King of Spain, Philip VI, Felipe VI, signed the certificate on the 6th of December of 2016. And that was Spanish, Spain's Constitution Day, so I'm honored that on a holiday, he signed my certificate. This award is the highest order a non-Spaniard can receive from Spain. It recognizes my career in promoting bilingualism and the language and culture of Spain and the Americas. I want to thank the Arlington Public Schools, the School Board, Dr. Pat Murphy, Dr. Rob Smith, and of course, Dr. Art Gosling, who hired me, for allowing me to lead Key School, Escuela Key, for the past 23 years. I feel blessed that I have truly lived the adage that if you have a job you love, you never go to work a day of your life. And truly, I have loved every minute of working at Key. In fact, when I figured out how many days it's been, it's 8,395 days that I've been the Principal of Key School. As you know, Arlington is singular in the nation in that we offer the K-12 immersion for our students. They can begin at Claremont or Key, continue to Gunston, and go to Wakefield High School. And we are all international Spanish academies. The four of us, we've all been accepted to be part of the Embassy of Spain's program with our Memorandums of Understanding through the embassy. The relationship and the friendship with the embassy has been extremely beneficial for all of us in Arlington. I only ask, in the spirit of my award, and as I retire this summer, that APS continue to support and expand the K-12 immersion program in Arlington, so that it continues to be the exemplar for the world for the right thing to do about raising bilingual children, who then become global citizens and represent Arlington and the United States of America wherever they choose to live and travel throughout the world. Thank you again for this great honor.
Now, I'd like to invite our guests from the embassy to join us up front here for a picture with our board members. There we go. Okay, just another round of thank yous to all of the principals, families, students, staff, the folks we were celebrating. It really, really was a very rewarding evening. We're really glad you were all able to come out. We do also understand that at this point, audience members do decide when -- we're moving on to announcements and the business part of our meeting, so if you do choose to depart, we will miss you, but we do understand that it may be your choice. Please watch us on TV when you get home if you do decide to depart. Thank you very much. Yeah, right. School Board, better than figure skating. Reed thinks so. Okay.
Dr. Cannon, your enthusiasm is so greatly appreciated.
It was a joke, but, okay, I was going to let the room quiet a little bit, we had a number of people departing. And we are now at announcements. On Saturday, February 24th, the School Board will hold a retreat from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the library at Washington Lee High School. Board members, do you have any announcements this evening? Ms. Lento?
Yes, I wanted to remind the community that next week is Clerk of the Court, I mean, sorry. I saw Paul Ferguson a few days ago. I apologize.
School Board Clerk Appreciation Week.
And we are so, so thankful to have the amazing, amazing staff that we have supporting us, and we are excited to celebrate them next week.
Yes.
Yes. So our Clerk of the Board is Melanie Elliott. Would you like to take a remembrance? I'm not having a good day.
And we also have Claudia Mercado, who is the Deputy Clerk, and we also have one other staff person, Julianne Jones, who, we have three staff members who staff the School Board. And we are greatly appreciative, and we work well because of them.
Absolutely. Our office is small but mighty. We rely on our Clerk and Deputy Clerk and our Assistant Julianne to really keep us moving and get our work done and show up prepared. So we do want to say a public thank you. We will be having a small celebration with you all next week that we're looking forward to, but we wanted to make sure everyone knows and remembers to please express appreciation for our amazing clerk next week. Okay, with that, Dr. Murphy, do you have announcements?
I do, thank you. Got a couple of comments that I'd like to make.
I think that's our best strategies, and it's proven to be very, very effective as we move forward. And I'll actually touch on that a little bit later here on one other topic that I'll share. Transitioning here, we've got a three-day holiday coming up this weekend. We're going to be celebrating on Monday, President's Day, so there is no school, and staff have a holiday as well. We've got elementary and then middle school conferences coming up here on March 1st and 2nd, and I'll just make note, our teachers at both the elementary and the middle school levels have conversations with parents. I think one of the board members asked me earlier, you know, how do they encourage students to participate in summer school, or when does that conversation begin? This is that perfect time, and our teachers begin to speak to parents about what summer opportunities their children may avail themselves to. So be looking for that when those conferences occur. We are celebrating Black History Month, continuing to recognize models of excellence among our students. We've also got the hashtag and a list of different activities that are occurring across our schools. We started something a number of years ago that I think is quite unique, and that's celebrating some of the alumni that are trailblazers and that are actually could be still members of our staff, and so we are recognizing those and we're logging those on our website. So at the end of the month, we will have a total of eight individuals. And then we are having our signature celebration here on February 28th, and that's at Gunston Middle School, and it's celebrating our past and our future excellence here in Arlington. So we hope folks come out for that special event. I believe it starts at 6:30 at Gunston that evening. We wanted to recognize our crossing guard, our crossing guard at Kenmore Elementary School, and I had an opportunity to go out the other morning and recognize her. I'm there with David McBride, the principal there at Kenmore Middle School, but a thank you to all our crossing guards for the support they lend in helping our students move to and from school in a safe way. By the way, we had a crossing guard recognized as most outstanding. There are several that are recognized throughout the state, and last year, we had our crossing guard at Ashland Elementary, who was also recognized. So thank you to the work they do in making sure that our students are safe. We also are celebrating Love the Bus Month, or Week, excuse me, this week, and I know that schools have been having a number of activities in thanking their bus drivers for helping them travel to and from school in a safe manner. I also want to make note that we are working very closely with the county and the art bus transportation, and that students can avail themselves to an iRide Smart Trip card at half price. It's something that we're looking at and trying to encourage students to use public transportation, and it's also something that we're trying to encourage, a relationship between the county and the schools as we become much more compact and urbanized in some of our areas and having students be able to use public transportation as a way to move around town. So look for more on that, but again, thank you to all our bus drivers and the work that they do each and every day to keep our kids safe. You may see up there in that upper left-hand corner, one of our schools elected to kind of emphasize or underline the idea of gratitude and appreciation. I believe this was at Long Branch Elementary, and so the students wrote Valentine's cards to all of their, either their crossing guard or to their bus driver in thanking them and letting them know how grateful and appreciative they were. So again, just another kind of practice that I think, and I want to, you know, recognize Principal Felicia Rousseau for that effort, and the bus drivers, as you can see there, really appreciated that and were most thankful. Reminder also about pre-K registration underway for both Primary Montessori and Virginia Preschool Initiative. You can either go to register at Syfax there, and there are the times listed, or you can go onto the website and find out information if you go to the early childhood at apsva.us. This is the time period this goes through. Help me out here. Oh, September, for three-year-olds that, for individuals that are three years of age, by September 30th, they can register. And Ms. O'Grady, help me out here. You're an expert. Through Monday, April 16th. There you go. Staring me right in the face. Also, a reminder about kindergarten registration also underway, and now through April 16th. This option, you can either go to the Syfax Welcome Center or elementary option applications are now online, and we did receive, as a result of the high school and middle school online applications, we did see a greater volume of those. If you need assistance, though, you can go to the Welcome Center or to your local school, and they can provide you assistance with that. Here's the summer school information again, and registration begins March 1. There are a series of deadlines throughout the catalog depending on the program, so the timeliness of our elementary and middle school conferences really fit well with parents and teachers talking about some of the options and opportunities that are out there. I will be reminding folks as we go through the spring of those various deadlines as we approach them, but you can see there is the URL. For students, they can also register at their home school, and for non-APS students who would like to avail themselves to the summer school program, they can go to the summer school office and pick up that information there. And we'll kind of keep a running calendar on the webpage as far as what are some of the upcoming deadlines. We're going to be recognizing and celebrating Digital Learning Day coming up here on February 22nd. This is a national digital learning day, and we're going to be highlighting many of the ways that digital learning is going to be integrated or is being integrated into our classrooms across the school division. You can watch on social media with our hashtag #DLDAYAPS18, and I'm sure we'll do some type of snapshot or video to highlight some of the events of that particular day. So this year, I've elected to go out as one of the ways and measures to talk about good decision-making and reinforcing some of the activities that staff and our coaches are doing, and talking with all of our coaches, fall, winter, and spring, about good decision-making. And I think this dovetails with the idea, if you see something, say something. If you're concerned about, you know, a fellow student or a colleague, that you say something, and there's a host of different resources, from our principals to our teachers, but I really emphasized with the coaches, they see students in a different light. They see students in a different setting than perhaps the typical classroom, and they also, students, want to participate and be involved in many of those activities. So we're really kind of promoting the idea of good decision-making, making healthy choices, also being accountable, and then finally, coupled with that, making sure that students make good decisions but also are healthy and fit. So this is just one way that we're continuing to kind of send the message. There are a host of resources there. I encourage parents, if they have questions, contact your principal, contact your counselor, and there's also a variety of online resources that folks can avail themselves to as well. Well, the move here is coming up, and the clock is ticking, but this facility is going to be moving with all of the folks in it to the Ed Center there at Syfax on Washington Boulevard. We've kind of got a schedule here that outlines the progression, starting here in April, and according to our Mr. Chadwick and his team, we are on schedule and we are going to sort of adhere to what we have outlined here. As you can see, it sort of all culminates at the end of April, then with the final stage with our Technology Center moving out the first week in May. But I do want to make note, the last school board meeting will be here on April 19th, and then our first school board meeting at the Syfax Building over on Washington Boulevard will be May 3rd. So a couple more reminders about that, just kind of transitioning, and we'll all be in one space, which I think will be very, very helpful, and we'll give you more information kind of about the layout of the offices and how you can find us there on Washington Boulevard. We have my budget presentation coming up next Thursday evening. You can also see a variety of hosts of work sessions that are also planned through the month of March and into April. I'll just note that the county manager is also making a presentation of his budget on Saturday, the 24th. So I think this year, for the first time, both of those are almost synced at the same time. You can also see the variety of public hearings that we have scheduled, and then the school board is prompted to adopt on May 3rd, as far as board action. And then finally, continue to stay well. I know today was a wonderful day out there. I think it was highs in the 70s, but I think they're forecasting some inclement weather for the weekend, so it's going to be a little bit up and down. So stay, you know, stay well, wash your hands, make sure that you're getting plenty of rest. Some of the basics, just really reinforcing all those items. So that's all I've got.
Excellent, thank you. We are now ready to act on our consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. I'd like to announce that under consent, the board has made three personnel appointments. First, Sarah Putnam was appointed Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Ms. Putnam. Ms. Putnam joined Arlington Public Schools in 2002 and has been an elementary classroom teacher, a mathematics coach, the elementary mathematics specialist, and supervisor of mathematics. For the last six months, Ms. Putnam has served as interim Director of Curriculum and Instruction. In this position, she has led the curriculum review and revision process, working to strengthen the curriculum and integrate key elements of the new Virginia graduation requirements into instruction. Ms. Putnam provides leadership and support across content areas and programs, has a passion for working collaboratively, and supports partnerships with the county, community members, and staff. We look forward to her continued great work. Thank you very much. We always do like to honor family, and I see you already had, we saw one, just other family members want to just wave real quickly so we can -- thank you so much for -- we really want to acknowledge family members mostly so that we get a chance to tell them what a rock star you are and how happy we are to have you as part of our system. Thank you, Ms. Putnam. Also, under consent, the board appointed David McBride, principal of Kenmore Middle School. Mr. McBride. With over 20 years' experience, Mr. McBride has spent his entire educational career in APS as a middle school teacher, English Language Arts Specialist, and Assistant Principal. Since the fall of 2016, Mr. McBride has served as interim principal at Kenmore. The students there have made remarkable progress in reading and writing under his leadership, and with his help, Kenmore's technology focus has been strengthened through new career and technical education offerings and a renovated STEAM lab. Mr. McBride is a student-centered leader who believes in and supports the whole-child model. He has demonstrated a commitment to staff and to building a program that supports students and families while increasing student academic success. Congratulations, Mr. McBride. Let's have the family stand up. Family.
My wife, Cassie McBride, teaches at McKinley Special Education Teacher.
Awesome.
My mom, Susan Walden-Bride, she went to Washington Lane Swanson, and my daughter, Maddie.
Fantastic. And you have a son who is in college.
I have a son named Randolph Bacon, who is Yorktown, and is seeing the way the marriage feels.
Yep, yep, and couldn't be with us. Thank you so much. Great work. Rock star also, as I think your family knows that. And the board also reappointed Dr. Donna Snyder as interim principal Randolph Elementary School. Dr. Snyder. Also, a long-serving member of APS, Dr. Snyder has served as Title I Supervisor, interim principal of Hoffin-Boston Elementary School, and Director of Early Childhood and Elementary Education. Since August of 2016, Dr. Snyder has served as interim principal at Randolph. The students there have made remarkable progress in reading and writing under his leadership, and with his help, Randolph's technology focus has been strengthened through new career and technical education offerings and a renovated STEAM lab. Dr. Snyder is a student-centered leader who believes in and supports the whole-child model. He has demonstrated a commitment to staff and to building a program that supports students and families while increasing student academic success. Congratulations, Mr. McBride. Let's have the family stand up. Family.
My wife, Cassie McBride, teaches at McKinley Special Education Teacher.
Awesome.
My mom, Susan Walden-Bride, she went to Washington Lane Swanson, and my daughter, Maddie.
Fantastic. And you have a son who is in college.
I have a son named Randolph Bacon, who is Yorktown, and is seeing the way the marriage feels.
Yep, yep, and couldn't be with us. Thank you so much. Great work. Rock star also, as I think your family knows that. And the board also reappointed Dr. Donna Snyder as interim principal Randolph Elementary School. Dr. Snyder. Also, a long-serving member of APS, Dr. Snyder has served as Title I Supervisor, interim principal of Hoffin-Boston Elementary School, and Director of Early Childhood and Elementary Education. Since August of 2016, Dr. Snyder has served as Randolph's interim principal. She has been an effective leader and has overseen increased student achievement and improved overall school effectiveness. She uses shared decision-making and collaboration to build relationships and maintain positive school morale. Dr. Snyder has held many positions and has a wealth of experience with community engagement and outreach. She is a proven leader who leads with excellence and has a wealth of experience in transforming culture, climate, and instructional programming to create a positive learning atmosphere for all students. Thank you, Dr. Snyder, for continuing to serve in this position. Thank you all, and again, thank you so much, especially to the families for coming out tonight to support these wonderful people. Thanks. We are now moving on to citizen comment on non-agenda items. Before I read the speaker guidelines, I know that some people came to make comments. I want to make sure that they had a chance to give our clerk the speaker forms, because that does become a rule, that you get those in before we start this item. So if anybody did not get a chance to do that, now's the time. Looks like we're good. Okay. So first, Ms. Elliott, we do have speakers?
Yes.
Okay. So I will first read the speaker guidelines. The school board welcomes public comment. Generally, school board members do not respond to comments during the meetings. If they have not already signed up online, speakers must submit a speaker slip to the clerk before the agenda item they wish to speak on is called. Each speaker may speak for up to two minutes. There's a timer to help you keep track of your time, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the buzzer sounds. All comments should address a matter related to Arlington Public Schools. Speakers should be courteous and address their comments to the entire school board. Speakers are called in the order in which they sign up. If you have written comments, please give them to the clerk. We ask the audience to refrain from applauding as it takes time away from speakers. This approach of a silent knock is a nice way to express your support when you hear a speaker comment that you approve of. And with that, Ms. Elliott, would you like to call the first speakers, please?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Genevieve Kelly.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. It's inspiring to hear the stories and the new people and the promotions in the school. I'm here to talk about the Wilson Building. My name is Genevieve Kelly, unrelated to another Kelly speaker I think who's coming up. I'm an attorney and I'm a former assistant principal, but in full disclosure, I've never been at any sort of county meeting before. I've never even been to a PTA meeting, and full disclosure, I'm not here tonight to talk about pedagogy or the spirit of the ADA, even though that's where my professional backgrounds are. I'm really here because of these guys. This is my son, Jack. Monica, Desmond. Jack's at Patrick Henry, where he has great friendships with some kids in the communications program, and we've developed great family friendships with some families participating in that program. We came tonight for my first county board meeting because the plans of the Wilson Building are just not something I could support for my kids if my kids went to H.B. Woodlawn. We want our children to learn a lot of things through Arlington County Public Schools, and as any sociologist or archaeologist or educated person knows, architecture says a lot about our values as a community. It tells us so much about people and about ourselves, and the architectural plans in place right now for Wilson really were, have been bothering me a lot. As a member of the community, I'm a bit embarrassed of the plans. It's been gnawing away at my conscience, which is why I came here to just say something about -- about it tonight. It teaches us about how we feel and where our priorities are, and these are not the lessons I want my kids to learn. It's not too late, I don't think, to do the right thing and take another look at them. Thank you.
All right. I will go back to our usual practice, because we do have a good number of speakers, so I will call up the next three speakers, and if you could line up at the post there, and then we can move forward to the podium more efficiently. So the next three speakers are Stacy Z., Catherine Evans, and Tana Samansky.
My name is Stacy Z., and I'm a Campbell Elementary School parent. I'm here tonight to express my support for keeping Campbell Elementary in its current location. Campbell is the only expeditionary school in Virginia, and our program is tightly connected to our Wetlands Outdoor Classroom, Pond, and the Walkable Long Branch Nature Center, all years in the making, with significant collaboration and effort from the community, parent, teachers, students, and staff. Campbell Elementary is a model for how a school can be successful in a diverse environment. Approximately 60% of our students participate in the Free and Reduced Meal Program. With this high level of diversity, our school is thriving. Some examples: five-year test scores are on a strong upward trajectory. All groups of students show strong rising trends, while the gaps have, gap groups have risen so much that the achievement gap has been nearly closed. The interlude program, after several moves from other schools, has been woven into the fabric of Campbell, including physical changes, integrating teachers, and most importantly, integrating students. Fully implemented reading workshops, writers workshops, and responsive classroom techniques have resulted in significant increases in the percentage of students reading and writing on grade level. All of this has been achieved within a Title I school, with a majority of students coming from South Arlington. I'm concerned that the School Board in APS may consider a move that would run a serious risk of undoing years of hard work, success, and positive outcomes for childrens and families who have gained so much. The Campbell program in the community is tied to the school grounds and needs to remain in its current location. The outdoor program is the very heart of our school. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
My name is Catherine Evans. I'm a Campbell Elementary parent, and I'm here to comment on the elementary school boundary realignment and its impact on option schools, and more specifically on Campbell. Campbell Elementary is a countywide option school built on expeditionary platform with a fierce appreciation for the whole-child concept. The Campbell community was recently disheartened to hear the recent mumbleings that the beloved program may be in jeopardy of moving. And I'd like to comment on the physical attributes of Campbell as they relate to the idea of it becoming a neighborhood school and the success of its current program. Typical APS neighborhood schools currently serve upwards of 800, I'm sorry, 650 students, while Campbell currently houses about 430. And quite simply, there's no more room to accommodate the number of students that would be associated with it becoming a neighborhood school. Both Campbell's student body size and the physical site are important attributes that make it unique, successful, and the perfect spot for an option school. Regarding that option, the Campbell community is a socio-economically diverse group that has, over the past several years, devoted blood, sweat, and tears to make this program what it is today, a successful example of closing the gap and community involvement. I'm not implying that other schools don't do this as well, but this dedication truly has made Campbell what it is today. Students have built and planted garden beds, parents have donated time and money, and teachers and staff have cultivated an amazing atmosphere of community. The community is so close-knit that tears were shed at even the thought that it could change. The physical site lends itself to this community and incorporates wetlands learning and grow and learn gardens and a courtyard turtle pond. All of these are deeply integrated into the curriculum and culture. We've also fostered a relationship with the Long Branch Learning Center next door and take advantage of its proximity by multiple walking field trips for learning. The School Board lists strengthening school and family-community relationships as one of its priorities. And moving Campbell is an option.
Thank you. Before Ms. Samansky, the next three speakers are Keith Shannon, Heather Eilers Bowser, and Tina Kuklinski Miller.
Good evening. It has come to our attention that some in our community do not understand why the design of the Wilson Building is offensive. So we thought it might be helpful to take a step back tonight and explain why this is such a big deal, why we absolutely believe this is a social justice and civil rights issue, and why the disability community will continue to push until a positive resolution is reached. If you are like most Americans, you rarely encounter people with visible disabilities growing up. We are all uncomfortable in new territory, especially when we may not understand the history and context. Without that history and context, it may not be clear how the Wilson design perpetuates the otherness and implicit devaluation of those with significant disabilities. We may be completely unaware that unconscious biases based on outdated assumptions and stereotypes may exist. Over the past month, we have been encouraged that many in our progressive community have reached out to learn more about disability and inclusion. We need to move past our collective discomfort to have honest, positive, and constructive conversations about these issues. Be curious. Ask questions about the right terminology to use, or about how to offer support. Disability is a completely natural part of human diversity. There is stigma or shame in disability only if you think there is. Like everyone else, those with disabilities simply want to feel welcomed and to belong. I'll close by saying, I'm thrilled that, on Tuesday night, senior APS leadership finally opened a dialogue on a path forward to resolve this issue. Thank you for your vision, professionalism, and dedication, Assistant Superintendent Taranatris. We look forward to constructive discussions.
My name's Keith Shannon. I'm also here to comment on the Wilson Building. I come here first as a community member who supports equal access and treatment for all individuals, and second, as a father of a pre-K APS student with special needs. Forty-five years ago, children with special needs and disabilities had no federal right to attend school. It was actually legal and not unusual for children with significant disabilities to be excluded from any formal education. The first civil rights legislation for people with disabilities, the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, was signed by President Nixon, and two years later, the predecessor of the IDEA, Special Education Law, was signed by President Ford. In 1990, when President George H.W. Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act, he proclaimed, "Let the shameful wall of exclusion come tumbling down. This law will ensure the opportunity to blend fully and equally into the rich mosaic of the American mainstream." Today, there are over 50 million people with disabilities in the U.S. With greater exposure to people with disabilities has come greater understanding. But nearly 30 years after the passage of the ADA, substantial barriers to equality of access and opportunity remain, both in education and the rest of our society. Please ensure that Arlington does not take a step backward in history by needlessly embedding discriminatory and exclusionary barriers to students with significant disabilities in the new Wilson Building. Thank you.
My son has Down Syndrome and attends Nottingham Elementary School. As a possible prospective parent of a student, a prospective student of the Stratford Program, I wanted to help ensure, I want to help ensure that my son is not relegated to a separate entrance or any other kind of disparate treatment. Almost 15% of the APS student body, or nearly 4,000 students, have a disability. Does this Board know that over 500 APS students, including my son, spend all or almost all of their day in completely separate classrooms, with no interactions with students without disabilities, and almost all of them have either autism or an intellectual disability? Do you know that APS has never met Virginia's uninspired targets for including students with disabilities in the regular classroom setting? And that we're not even close. Did you know that APS over-identifies English language learners as having disabilities? While about 14.5% of all APS students have been identified as having a disability, a disproportionately high 20% of APS's English language learners have been identified as having a disability. Did you know that more than three-quarters of Stratford students are students of color, whereas only one-third of HB students are students of color? Last week, the U.S. Government's National Council of Disability found that, quote, "While the requirements to place students with disabilities in the least restrictive environment should lead schools to make objective decisions based on data, this does not seem to be the case, considering the variation in placement patterns across the states, the disproportionate segregation of students with certain disabilities," that is autism and intellectual disabilities, "and the disproportionate segregation of students of color by both race and disability." All of these disparities certainly seem to be true for APS. We have a long way to go. Thank you.
Ma'am, could you repeat your name for us, please?
Heather Eilers Bowser. Thank you.
All right. Before Ms. Kuklinski Miller speaks, our next three speakers are Julia Rowan, Sada Akzars Tova, and Kathy Guernsey.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, I'm Tina Kuklinski Miller. I'm not only the mom, but have the privilege of being the mom to a junior at Yorktown, but I'm also a mom that many APS students look up to and expect me to know what's right and what's not. With that, I'd like for all of us to be thinking through and reflect on the word ableism as we're looking at all of the new schools that are coming online, as we're looking at all of the choices that we're presenting to our parents, as we're looking at all of the things that impact APS students. So what is ableism? Ableism is a decade-old term defined most basically as a prejudice against people with disabilities or discrimination in favor of able-bodied people. It has also been described as practices that devalue and limit the potential of persons with disabilities, and practices and beliefs that assign inferior value or worth to people with disabilities. Ableism can be conscious or unconscious, and it promotes the differential or unequal treatment of people because of actual or presumed disabilities. An ableist society is one that treats non-disabled individuals as normal and disabled individuals as special or abnormal. Ableism leads to buildings, services, education, and other features of society being designed and operated to serve normal, non-disabled people, and thereby inherently excluding those with disabilities. The barriers created by an ableist society can be physical, attitudinal, or systemic. Some examples of ableism include hatred of people with disabilities, denying access to people with disabilities, rejecting disabled applicants for housing and jobs, maintaining the institutionalized discrimination of benefit systems designed. Thank you very much.
My name is Julia Rowan. I'm the sister of an educator who uses a wheelchair and a friend of many people with disabilities, and I'm here this evening to encourage you to help make the Wilson Building design more inclusive and more reflective of our community's values. Research has shown that segregation and isolation make people feel frustrated, resentful, inferior, unaccepted, and ashamed. Without equipping students with the opportunities to learn and grow with general society, disabled students are relegated to a devalued social role and are taught dependence and subordination, rather than how to live a full and active life. When asked to share his impressions of self-contained classrooms, a boy named Victor told researchers, "Please know that self-deadening places are hard places to make progress and learn stuff. They don't have people wanting you to really learn anything, except for people, places, nouns I already know. That's my take. But I'm just one person. I know lots of people love these rooms. More often, they play games, like Uno. A school should be what we all love, but my experiences just about broke my freaking soul." By contrast, a parent of MEPA students in APS recently recounted this experience. "My child, who's largely nonverbal and uses an iPad app to communicate, was able to pay attention and participate in the general education classroom for as many as two hours at a time successfully. He was receiving instruction with support in a meaningful way, on his own level, in the classroom. He was given opportunities to work with peers who fought to help him with his work. He knew the children, and they knew him. It was wonderful to see other children from the class run up and hug my son and tell their mothers how much they love my son. What a gift. I happened to be at school on the first day that my son went to PE with his peers, and I will never forget the look of pure joy on his face. It was so obvious to all around that he was so thrilled to be with kids who were also having fun." Thank you.
As an APS parent, I'm here today because I do not want my child, or any APS child, to internalize the discriminatory biases against people with disabilities enshrined in design choices for new APS schools. People with disabilities have experienced a pretty horrific history. In addition to systematic exclusion and a total absence of civil rights until the 1970s, people with disabilities had to endure eugenics and sterilization movements and forced institutionalization. Until 1975, many children with disabilities were denied access to any education. When public law 94142 was passed that year, it was meant to guarantee a free, appropriate education to children with disabilities. Millions gained access to the educational system, but these children with disabilities often found themselves segregated from their peers without disabilities. As the education scholars Beth Ferry and David Connor have written, "The evolution of two separate systems of education echoed the inequalities associated with racially segregated schools." In its 1954 Brown versus Board of Education decision, the Supreme Court observed that, quote, "Education is perhaps the most important function of state and local governments. It is the very foundation of good citizenship. In these days, it is doubtful that any child may reasonably be expected to succeed in life if he is denied the opportunity of an education. Such an opportunity, where the state has undertaken to provide it, is a right which must be available to all on equal terms." Last week, the U.S. Government's National Council on Disability released a report entitled, "The Segregation of Students with Disabilities." The report notes that segregated special education offers less instruction, has fewer opportunities to learn, and fewer opportunities to use knowledge and skills during instruction and other meaningful activities. Segregation in schools leads to segregated society." Thank you.
Thank you. Before Ms. Guernsey speaks, the next three are Ann Kelly, Elizabeth Preo, and Jenna Dressel.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in support of inclusion across our schools. As Thurgood Marshall once observed, "People with disabilities have been subject to a lengthy and tragic history of segregation and discrimination that can only be called grotesque." The pioneers of the disability rights movement had to beat back societal norms that had used ugly laws to hide visibly-disabled people from public view, that had voyeuristically paraded others at circuses and freak shows, and that had championed the eugenics movement leading the U.S. Supreme Court to uphold a Virginia law authorizing the state to surgically sterilize so-called mental defectives without their consent, a decision in which Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes famously declared that "three generations of imbeciles are enough." Yet out of this, and through the tireless leadership of advocates with disabilities, the United States has emerged as a champion of disability rights, not just at home, but abroad. Disability advocates around the world still refer to the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, as an emancipation proclamation, a clarion call that ultimately inspired adoption of the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, now ratified by 175 parties. Article 24 of that treaty specifically addresses the need to ensure an inclusive education system at all levels for persons with disabilities, as well as lifelong learning. That is a legacy we can be proud of, but it is one that we, as Arlington residents, and our community's institutions, including the School Board, must actively and consistently protect. To quote Eleanor Roosevelt, "Human rights happen in small places, close to home, including the school someone attends. Such are the places where every man, woman, and child seeks equal justice, equal dignity, and equal opportunity without discrimination. Unless these rights have meaning there, they will have little meaning anywhere." Thank you. Thank you.
He takes care of me in my old age. I'm Anne Kelly, and this is Russell Kelly. He's number six of my children, five of which graduated from Wakefield. He's one of them. And I went to WNL. I can't believe I married someone from Wakefield, no offense. Anyway, before I mention Russell's, Russell graduated in 2006 from Wakefield. But I'm going to read what was given to me from these people first. I'm going to read a few quotations. The first is from an APS mom who has an autistic son in the MEPA program. "My son's IEP," this is in quotes, "my son's IEP team was reluctant to let him to take just two general ed classes. It took several meetings and an appeal to APS administration to grant his wish to be educated with his peers. The inclusion experience has had unanticipated benefits. Besides feeling ecstatic that he is finally learning and becoming welcomed by the general education teachers and peers, the teachers are reporting that his presence is having a positive effect on other students. The students' attention to the curriculum and respect towards each other have increased. The school counselor has even asked whether other MEPA students can be included, like my son is," end of quote. The second is from filmmaker Dan Habib. "I've come to understand that it takes generational change. Don't forget that not long ago, people were smoking on airplanes. We were not wearing seat belts on the way back. We were legally segregating blacks and whites in school. FDR had to hide his wheelchair in public photographs because it was seen as a sign of weakness. But generations have come where these things are not even a weakness, and they're not even given anymore." Oh, sorry. Let me just say thanks to Cynthia and a few other people in this room. Russell was in inclusion, except for two years. He's 31 years old. He is taught more in some cases than been taught, but it was a benefit for him to be in the regular ed programs. The two years he was taken out, and I know I have to get out of here, the two years is when he stopped talking because he learned sign language in the self-contained program. Do I care? No, because he understands everything. What did you like about Wakefield? What did you like especially? Tell them. Well, he liked everything. He usually, he usually says root Wakefield. Anyway, I would hope that we've come a long way and that we have a lot, it's beneficial for our students who have special, special things to be with other students. I work at St. Thomas More Cathedral School. I ran a Let's Be Friends Club through the Recreation Department, and we were always together. So please, keep it going. Can you say goodbye?
Bye.
Bye.
Hello, my name is Jenna Dressel, and I'm the president-elect for the Special Education Parent Teacher Association, or SEPTA. I'm also a special education teacher and a very proud parent to two terrific boys at Jamestown Elementary. I'd like to turn the focus back to the Wilson Building. I was able to attend this past Tuesday's ASAC meeting and was encouraged by some new information presented by Dr. Karen Gary and Casey Robinson, especially as it relates to improving current inclusion practices between the Stratford Program and HB Woodlawn. However, we have many unanswered questions. During the last five years, how many Stratford students have had their IEPs provide that they will attend an academic class in the HB Woodlawn Program? Is there a current plan for where Stratford student buses will drop students off, or for how they will enter the building once they're dropped off? Is there really no place in the design for parents of Stratford students to park to drop off their students? And what is the plan for the HB parents in terms of dropping off their students? What is the grade from the 18th Street to the entrances on the main floor? And if the main reason the building was designed with a separate entrance for Stratford students with safety, then what steps are currently being taken to ensure that students in wheelchairs are educated on a floor with multiple egress points? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolyn Levy, Corey Folliard, and Gina Rocco.
My name is Caroline Levy. My son is a sixth-grade student at Stratford. I also happen to be passionate about inclusion. Is it a contradiction that I've placed him in the most restrictive environment possible? Not really. My son has very significant support needs, and while I know he could be meaningfully included, educated, and supported in a regular classroom, I am not yet confident that the pieces are in place for this to happen. Stratford also happens to be in our neighborhood, which allows my son, for the first time, to be in a neighborhood building, even if it is a lottery school. I am absolutely confident that before my son leaves APS in 10 years, this community will value, respect, and fully include him. Right now, there is a limited vision for the students at Stratford. I have a vision for a Wilson school with composite programs which do not have choreographed interaction and disparate goals. One school, one administration, one schedule, one directory, one PTA, one student body. We all look forward to continuing to discuss how best to remedy the Wilson Building situation. To everyone else in the Arlington community who may be listening tonight and is curious about disability and inclusion, please, please reach out to the Arlington Inclusion Task Force and the Arlington Special Education PTA to learn more about the needs of students with disabilities, what real, well-supported, equity-based inclusion looks like, and how you can support our community. We welcome you and wish to support you, and we will do our best to help you feel like you belong.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Folliard, I got my slips out of order, so our next speaker will be Elizabeth Preo. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Preo. Thank you for letting me speak before you tonight. I am the proud parent of a junior at Washington Lee, but I actually come here to speak to you as, in the capacity of my experience as a person with a disability, and to explain why the current placement of the MEPA, or MEPA Program is so harmful. When I was in elementary and junior high, I was especially attuned to being treated unnecessarily different. Of course, no kid wants to be different, and at that age, you're still figuring out your place in the world, your, where you fit in, and you're very, very attuned to even the smallest clue of what makes somebody different. Well, I think that as a person with a disability, you are different, at least if you have a visible disability, and you get used to that. What you don't get used to, and what makes a person, and can be harmful to a person, is when they're unnecessarily called out as different. And this happens over and over, and will happen over and over in the life of a person with a disability, in the form of unnecessary accommodations. You think, hey, that's great, well-meaning people giving you accommodations, so it can be so hard, horrible, but you start reading into them more than it has meant, especially as an elementary school student. A seemingly innocuous thing, like a special entrance, can cause a kid who maybe would never have thought they needed a separate entrance or wing of the school to think, well, maybe I do, and, and, you know, I am different, and the adults set it up so they know best, especially in the school time when you're taught to believe that your teachers know much more than you do. So you're, you're thinking, if a person without a disability might know somebody with a disability and think, why, why have they been given a separate entrance in part of the school? And having an elementary school kid wonder something like this when they never before thought about it is bad news. I wanted to say that I heard many people explain that the MEPA, current MEPA placement could be a positive thing for people. It's, it's close to the parking lot, so, you know, you don't have to go as far, it's more accessible. Some people would have to go in the main entrance and not like it because they're especially sensitive to stimuli. Well, these are reasons that adults give you, and I wonder if you ask the student with a disability, would they really, if they were given the opportunity, choose that several, separate entrance and the message that it sends, which is that people with disabilities need a special section of the school? I wanted to impart just one small story of when I was a fourth grader. I, on my first day of French class, I thought, how strange that this French teacher, who usually has a classroom up at this trailer on the very top of a hill, far away from the school, at a steep hill, well, now, why are we meeting in the library? Why are we the only class that's ever met in the library, and, and why wouldn't this teacher want to use her own classroom? But I didn't connect it to myself until one way of school administrator innocently said to me in the hallway, "Oh, do you like meeting in the library? Aren't you glad to not have to go up the hill?" And boy, was I shocked. Not only could I go up the hill, but it so made me mad that now everybody thinks I couldn't. In conclusion, the current placement of MEPA will send a real and lasting message. Please change.
My name is Corey Folliard, and I am a former Nottingham Elementary School PTA president and a parent of a current Nottingham fourth grader and Nottingham graduate who is now a seventh grader at Williamsburg. I'm here tonight because I am one of a large and growing group of concerned and former Nottingham families who have children with IEPs and 504s, children who are in ATSS and those who cannot even access ATSS. They represent a wide range of disabilities, including Down Syndrome, autism, ADHD, OHI, dyslexia, dysgraphia, auditory and visual and processing disorders. Unfortunately, as diverse as the children and disabilities are, their experiences with special education at Nottingham and within APS are, as a whole, are far too similar. Examples include families facing denial of identification and intervention, long-term difficulty accessing support, and children's learning needs not being appropriately handled. In addition, some teachers do not feel empowered to identify and recommend students for evaluation. Living through that experience myself, I can tell you it is a frustrating and helpless feeling when you know your children need help, but you don't know where to turn or what to ask for when the school says no. Parents have tried their best to work through the channels available to them. Eleven Nottingham families made public comments before ASAC in the last four months. The director of the Office of Special Education has been present to hear all of them. Sixteen families wrote letters to Dr. Murphy detailing systemic, broad, and longstanding failures with special education. Other letters, including my own, are forthcoming. Since the letters were sent, signatories were contacted by the Nottingham principal with an invitation to discuss their individual concerns. However, directing concerned families to reengage with the Nottingham administration is not a viable solution, given the nature and scale of these problems. Other than the principal, we have not heard from anyone at APS. You, our school board, are our last resort. Nottingham parents want to be a part of the process to bring positive change to our school, but we cannot do it alone. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Ms. Rocco speaks, the next three speakers are Amelia Black, Jenna Kotler, and Megan Lynch.
Good evening. Tonight I'll be talking about the Children's School Integration Station partnership. My name is Gina Rocco, and my children Andrew, age two, and Jaclyn, age five, attended children's school, and I'm writing to implore you to keep the exemplary partnership of TCS and IS together for the long term. Neither of my children will still be at TCS beyond your commitment to keeping the program together for the next two years, but I am here tonight because I feel passionately about the integration model and the need for this to continue. TCS is a high-quality preschool, and it's an invaluable benefit for APS teachers. The partnership with IS allows IS students to receive the necessary benefit of being placed with typically-developing peers to support and reinforce their own typically-developing skills in a way that segregated classrooms couldn't achieve. The benefit of many hours of daily interaction and play and friendship and learning together allow friendships to flourish, something that all children need, but special, but special-needs children need even more. Special-needs children with continuous placements from age two to five have the best opportunity to develop quality interactions and enter kindergarten in the best shape to succeed. And the continuation of this partnership impacts the much-needed options for preschool students with IEPs, especially those who are two- and three-year-olds who are not being served by our VPI program. The TCS population is welcoming and prepared and fully able to receive the IS population, so please keep their programs together for the benefit of both programs and all of the children. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, APS School Board members and Dr. Murphy. My name is Amelia Black, and I am a proud resident of the NOC neighborhood and APS employee. I am speaking in support of the Arlington Public Schools agreeing to a long-term agreement between TCS and Integration Station. As you, is this working? As you know, TCS has been providing childcare for the children of APS teachers and staff for over 30 years. The TCS Integration Station program is an exemplary model of inclusion that mutually benefits APS and staff of APS schools. Since being removed from the Reed Building, TCS board members and co-op members have hustled around the clock for the past several years to secure a building and a stable future for the continuation of these programs. We have done the legwork and just need your firm support to continue these two phenomenal programs. I'm speaking to you today because this is an amazing opportunity for APS, for IS, and for TCS. As you know, the agreement between TCS and IS allows for the expansion of Integration Station, which supports the child-fines, ever-growing need for preschool special education. Furthermore, we all know that a key strategy to closing the achievement gap and to achieving excellent educational outcomes is recruiting and maintaining high-quality staff members who can balance home and work while remaining dedicated public servants. With finding quality childcare continuously rated as one of the most challenging issues for young people living in the DMV, having a beautiful, affordable, top-notch, and well-established community childcare program designated for staff members is an amazing and unique recruitment tool for APS. Please honor your commitment to keeping quality APS staff members and to quality preschool for special educations, and vote for the long-term agreement between TCS and IS. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Jenna Kotler. I'm here again on behalf of the Children's School and Integration Station. Our 200 Arlington County students combined and families hope that you will continue to support the long-term future of IS and TCS partnership as TCS works to secure a permanent location. In the next few weeks, we would appreciate your commitment to continue our partnership. Thank you for supporting the Children's School and Integration Station for the past 25 years. Your teachers and residents thank you for all of your support and would greatly appreciate your continued support. I've been an Arlington County resident for 41 years. I attended Barcroft, Drew Model School, and HB Woodlawn. I was also lucky to benefit from Arlington's special education programs myself. I moved home to Arlington after graduating from UVA so my future children could attend Arlington County public schools. Eight years ago, when I found out that I was pregnant with my first child, Aiden, before I even told my family that I was pregnant, before I went to work, I went to TCS to submit an application for Aiden. Truth. My mother-in-law, a former APS teacher, my best friend, an APS teacher, my mother, a former teacher, all raved about TCS. When Aiden was born with a cleft lip and had to have surgery at three months and had speech issues, IS and TCS helped us. When Aiden was diagnosed with ADD, a learning disability, and dyslexia, IS and TCS helped us. When Aiden started on time at Nottingham, I had TCS and IS to thank. I cannot tell you how important TCS has been to our lives. Our other sons have also thrived at TCS. The Children's School is a model school. As you know, preschool programs are in a huge demand in Arlington County. Our waiting list includes hundreds more APS and Arlington residents with, moving a per- With providing, with moving a permanent location, we hope to expand our programs. Thank you.
Before Ms. Lynch speaks, is Ms. Lynch here? Okay. The next three speakers will be Jim Harris, Ingrid Gant, and Kevin Carey.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dr. Megan Lynch. I am a teacher at Kenmore Middle School, a member of the Douglas Park community, and most importantly, I'm a parent of two wonderful children, one of which, Julian, a three-year-old, is a student at the Children's School. This is his first year there, and I will say, in the past seven months, I've seen him grow intellectually, socially, in ways I couldn't have imagined. That's probably due to the fact that the teachers are phenomenal, but also to the partnership that the Children's School has with Integration Station. Every day Julian comes home from school, talking about how much fun he had with his friends and sharing stories about, you know, their playground interaction, or music class, or PE. And it's really heartening for me to hear that. Just yesterday, I was invited to attend the Valentine's Day party in his class, and it was a breath of fresh air to see the children all interacting together in such a positive way. Kids from Integration Station, as well as students from my son's class, were sharing Valentines, eating together, laughing together, playing together, sharing together, and it was a truly inclusive and warm environment. And I think my son benefits from that, but also the other students who are students at Integration Station benefit from those interactions daily. The need for early identification is crucial to academic success in elementary and secondary schools. I think Integration Station provides that and meets that need now, but as we know, the need is growing. So I feel that the conversation should be not whether or not to continue the partnership, but whether or not to expand the partnership, because it's truly a symbiotic relationship, and everybody wins. So thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jim Harris, and I live in Fairlington, near Abingdon School. In the context of the following items on your agenda tonight, the 2019 budget, the design of Yorktown's internal modifications, and construction award for Randolph School modernization, I ask you to begin comprehensive planning for a public school system in a county with a population growth of 60,000 new residents between now and 2040. I haven't spoken to anyone in county government who opposes a population growth of 3,000 or more new residents every year for the next 20 years. So it's time to start planning for a school system with 15,000 to 20,000 more students in 20 years. Rather than addressing the projected growth year after year in an ad hoc manner, as you're aware, the number of persons involved in county government, a number of persons involved in county government, are excited about Amazon locating a second headquarters in Arlington. But I've heard nothing from anyone at 2100 Clarendon Boulevard about what happens if that occurs. As I advise the county board, ad hoc public infrastructure projects are a poor way to plan Arlington's future. So is kicking the can down the road, year after year, budget after budget. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kevin Carey, and I'm a school bus driver. I'm an AEA member and a blue-collar worker. Blue-collar workers have been discriminated for over 40 years. Push comes to shove, we get the last of the, what's left on the plate. My brother, who operated APS pools and provided 70,000 student, water-safe students, and no drownings on his watch, was shorted on his retirement. Mr. Chadwick presided over that event and is well aware of the deficit. The abuse of workers without contracts has been going on for a very long time. Bus drivers have lost benefits such as time and a half after 30 hours, contracts that are not negotiated within 30 days. Bonus retentions have been suspended for years. No stipends have been initiated for bus drivers, whereas teachers have had stipends for years. In the, the present policy of using only previous bus experience up to five years as a benchmark is very narrow, at best, and discriminatory, discriminatory at worst. Taking into account the other criteria listed above would greatly benefit and enhance not only the present bus drivers, but would broaden the pool of candidates that would consider driving a school bus for APS. Compensation for equal experience would be a benefit for everyone. The following equal value considerations are: higher education, college degrees, or postgraduate. I'll leave that with you people.
If you have written comments, you can, you can give them to the clerks so that we can get them. Thank you. Thank you very much.
By the way, there are several teachers.
Good evening to Dr. Cannon, school board chair, members of the school board, Dr. Murphy, and leadership team, all assembled. My name is Ingrid Gant. I am speaking as the president of the Arlington Education Association. I have several members here that are from different scales, some who had to leave, and I'm speaking on behalf of our delegation. I had a question, if I would ask you, I would ask you, who are they? I commend you for having a moment of silence during this Black History Month, where you are highlighting me as a trailblazer on the screen for accomplishments that I have done. So I thank you for that opportunity, but you gave a moment of silence about things that happened in Florida. And so last night, as I was listening to the news, my heart was heavy. I didn't make it to Ash Wednesday service because I didn't feel like I could get there. And I asked myself, who are they? Who are the ones that people were waiting on to get the names, that students and teachers had ran out and left their belongings? And the newscasters couldn't tell you who they were. I fast forward to today, and I have many bus drivers that are here, who have asked for the same treatment that all teachers in other scales have. We met and we talked about a stipend, where you would have a professional stipend that's assigned to any scale, same amount of money. But who are they? When I asked about that, the words came back to me that they said that couldn't happen for them. They already, when they become a bus driver, have everything they need. Now, I don't know about you, but I didn't get my college education all in one setting. I stopped, came back, and now I have two degrees. But you're going to tell me that our bus drivers are not worthy enough to have a professional stipend standard, like every other scale, to better their education or theirselves? So who are they? Who are the "they" that says they can't do that? Who are the "they" that said the professional bonus that they used to have for retentions don't happen anymore? Who are the "they"? I just want you to ponder that question. As we're listening to disabilities and a lack of inclusion, we're discriminating against our own today. So who are they? Thank you.
We have one last speaker, Milagros Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Milagros Martinez, and I come here ill-prepared, but I have a passion, and that passion I wish to share. I work with the Arlington Public School System for over 15 years. I work in the capacity of a supervisor who makes sure that the staff are doing their work and caring for our childrens till 6 o'clock in the evening. Today, I don't come to talk to you about me. I came here because I am a member of AEA, Arlington Public School. I am a resident of Arlington County. I am very active in my civic association, former president. Currently, I am with the National, the Neighborhood Conservation Association Advisory Committee. I'm very active, but I'm here because many of the staff in Arlington County throughout all the scales are asking themselves, why me? I've been here 27 years, working the same job, showing up every day. I've been working 17 years, doing the same job, working every day. We have new leadership coming in, and because I don't speak English the same way they do, I am now the target of retaliation, bullying, discrimination, and I'm too afraid to speak out. I listen to them. I am not one of them, but I speak for them. Why me? Why them? Thank you.
Want to thank you all very much for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your taking the time. We do listen carefully to all comments. A variety of topics were raised. As you know, we do not normally comment at this point, but I do want to ask, since there have been a number of people coming regularly, I do want to ask at this point, Dr. Murphy, do you have any thoughts that you want to share about?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Cannon. And actually, some of the speakers on the topic of Wilson and Stratford made mention of this, so I may be summarizing some of these comments, but I think they were actually threaded through many of the, you know, speakers. And the first is, I do want to share with you, and I think you made mention to staff the other evening at the Advisory for Special Education Committee on Tuesday, I believe it was Tuesday, that we had staff out there. We actually had two school board members out at the meeting as well. And I think that signifies that we are listening, and I want to make mention that we are having dialogue that's going on, perhaps behind the scenes, it's about a variety of different aspects, not only related to Stratford and the Wilson project, but also to the whole idea around inclusion. I do note that as part of that discussion, I think it was alluded to by one of the speakers, about the entrance on the lower level, and we are having conversations about sort of what the layout of that is, what the design is, and if there are any considerations that can be brought to bear at this point in time. So those things are being relooked at and addressed. I do know that Dr. Karen Gary, the principal at Stratford, and the principal at H.B. Woodlawn, Dr. Casey Robinson, they were both out at the meeting the other evening. We've had extensive conversation with them, and while the programs may exist under the current design at the present building, there is conversation that's going on as far as how those programs can be integrated to a greater extent, and also the relationship between the different floors and how the students move around the building. And so I know that Dr. Natress and I have had extended conversations with both those individuals. I think their comments were well-received the other evening at the advisory meeting, and will continue to have conversation about that as well. Finally, I recognize that related to this whole conversation, while the situation at the Wilson Building is perhaps the catalyst, which is very positive, the idea of inclusion, which many of the speakers talked about, and our continuum of services is something that we're going to continue to look at. I've asked Dr. Natress to make a few comments about our continuum of services related to inclusion and how we move forward. I think we look at that very positively, by the way. We see some of the programs that are currently going on, as made mention with Integration Station as one aspect of that, and we see the positive results of that for all of our students and the benefits. So, Dr. Natress, I'll turn to you kind of at this point, talk a little bit about where we are with continuum of services.
And I also want to talk a little bit about Wilson, and I think one of the things we heard from our speakers tonight is this idea of one school, right, and creating one school for our students and really looking at things. Dr. Murphy spoke to this about classroom assignments and schedules and how we build a really inclusive model for our students as we move into the Wilson Building. And that's something that I know we are committed to within our department and within the division, and I think we will be able to do that, as we've had a lot of conversation over the last several weeks. And as Dr. Murphy said, we are also looking very systematically at our continuum of services for the school system and really focusing a lot on inclusion. And that work, I think, is happening behind the scenes and sometimes isn't, sometimes isn't as visible as we would like it to be, and some of those key areas really focus on our professional learning framework. Some of you may have seen that "connect, create, and innovate" idea, and part of the connection piece is focused on inclusion and looking at what are all of the things that our teachers and administrators need to know and be able to do in order to build inclusive environments across the board. And we also have staff from the Department of Teaching and Learning who are working directly with schools on a lot of the types of things we want to see along that continuum. I do also want to let people know that the Advisory Council on Instruction has a vice-chair dedicated to work on inclusion, and we've been talking about how to build some of that into our agendas this spring. It has been a part of the strategic plan conversation with the Strategic Planning Steering Committee. It's come up in quite a few of our meetings as we talk about mission, vision, core values, things around goals and strategies. And then finally, you'll hear a little bit later, some work on the policy discussion later this spring. And so I think there are a lot of things in place. I think sometimes we don't get those out there as explicitly as we could for folks to know, but we are committed to the things that have been spoken to tonight and will continue with this work, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. One of the dangers of going into one topic that we heard from speakers is that it, one of the reasons we don't do it normally, is that there are a variety of topics, and it's really not possible to comment on items that have come to us that we may not be fully briefed on ourselves. So again, we want to make sure everyone here knows you were heard this evening. We really appreciated you coming out, and we will, from there, go on with the rest of our agenda. Thank you all very much. Would love to have you stay, but the, this, the citizen comment portion of our non-agenda items is concluded at this point. So we will go now to our monitoring items, and our first monitoring item is the superintendent's update on the 2017-2018 action plan. Dr. Murphy?
Thank you, Dr. Cannon. I'd just like to remind everyone and bring your attention back to this year's action plan document. We've got this available. There are a number of these out there, but it kind of encapsulates all the different activities and projects that are on timeline that we're addressing this year, and I think this is in relationship to our growth. I do want to make note that the best resource for you with this information is our Engage website. Some of these timelines have adjusted or slipped because of just the volume of work that we are addressing this year. And what I try and do periodically at board meetings is to simply provide an update, a little bit of where we are, what the next steps are, and then what some of the decisions and timelines are. At the last meeting, I know Linda Erdis gave quite an extensive, you know, explanation of where we are with the new policies specifically related to school facilities. So this evening, she's going to, you know, summarize that again or recap, and that really falls into two categories as far as our new school facilities and then some of our existing facilities. So let me turn to her. This really falls out in group one with policies and policy revisions.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy, and I'm going to take the advice of our young speakers earlier this evening, and I'm going to breathe in and out, and we're all going to do that, and we're going to say, you've got this. Okay? Let me recap very quickly where we are as of this month moving forward. February and March, the staff committee will be working to develop- February and March, the staff committee will be working to develop some naming criteria. We're also working on doing the review of current school names so that we can come to the board in April with a draft naming criteria to revise the naming policy that the school board has for your review, and with the hopes that you will adopt that process in May. Based on that, then, because as I outlined last week, we have about four schools out there waiting for names, or waiting for names to be affirmed, whichever. So in June through August, the board would recruit the naming committees for the four schools in accordance with the school board policy and procedures that we have for naming, and go ahead and set those groups up to start in the fall. The same, then in the fall, those four groups will convene, work on the name as we've done we did last year for Alice Fleet and for the Arlington Community High School. They'll do the same thing and come to the board with a proposal for approval of those names in December of next year. Washington Lee, as I mentioned, we had decided, based on the interest of the community, to have greater conversation. Our goal is to, in June through August, to develop a statement of what tasks the committee should do, and then to recruit a community ad hoc committee. The board will also have conversations on what the makeup of that committee should be. Their goal would be to have that group meet September through November, have some community conversations, to let both sides of this conversation for the Washington Lee High School name have a conversation, a community conversation, and then with a report or reports to the school board in December. After that, the board obviously will have to look and listen to what you've heard and what you've seen and make a decision on whether or not to keep or to change the name for Washington Lee High School. And then if the decision is to keep the name, no further action will be needed, and if the decision is to change the name, then we would initiate a naming process that would go into effect. We would actually initiate, this is a slide I just realized is slightly incorrect, we would initiate the naming process then for next winter with the new name going into effect in the fall of 2020. Okay? Dr. Murphy?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Erdis. All right, so continuing on with this first group with policies and policy revisions, I've talked with you previously about our acceptable use and where we are with those policies. You actually took action on the policy related to filtering and federal guidelines, so we've moved forward with that. The next phase of that is the policy around acceptable use, and this is not an all-inclusive list, but these are examples here as far as what that will be addressing, from internet safety to rights and responsibilities, to also instruction and classroom use. And I think we're going to encompass a large number of aspects of that acceptable use. You can see that we've already taken the first step with some community engagement, and then the layout through February and March with some of the advisory committees, a community discussion coming up here in the first part of March, and then we'll be bringing this to the board later, the latter part of March, and then actions slated for April the 5th. We also are looking at a new policy related to inclusion, and I think there's a number of aspects of this that we are considering. So this is going to be also one of those that after the adoption of the strategic plan, we're going to be taking that, all of that into consideration, and there are a number of things that are also related or tied to a lot of the strategic planning decision process. We are looking for a community engagement opportunities, which we typically do with many of our activities. And then we have had a little bit of an adjustment with this, but we will be coming forward with the board for an information and then action item, so look for that to be coming back as far as how we move forward and take the next steps there. When we move to group number two, we've had discussion here about the elementary school boundaries, and this is about preparing for new schools and program moves. So I want to distinguish here right up front, you will note up in the upper right-hand corner, what we've proposed to the board is to bring this forward in phases. So you can see with, this is phase one, and this will run through, phase one runs through the end of this year. And what we're really beginning to look at is walk zones and the viability of some of our walk zones and how we may be able to address some of those barriers or hazards so that we can really increase the walk zone areas so students have greater access. So that's one element of this. We will also be looking at how we can utilize our current schools and how they are laid out, and is there the possibility that we may want to move or locate programs within schools? So really, we offer greater access and look at equity because many of our option programs are highly desired, and not everyone has complete access to those. So in looking at how perhaps our buildings are laid out, we can increase the level of access. We have something that's good. Why not make it available to more people at the end of the day? And so I think that's some of the thinking and rationale behind that, and I think we're very sensitive to many of the communities. I'll just, you know, note, we had some speakers comment on that earlier, but we are going to have a community process around that, and then we'll be bringing the latter part of spring here, an information item, and then for school board action, whatever considerations that we have as far as phase one. Where we then take the next step is in the fall with phase two, and then once we've made some of those decisions that I outlined in phase one, we'll be coming back and then going through the boundary process. That's slated then for the board to take action, the latter part of fall or in November, and then we move into the new boundaries being implemented for the start of the school year in the fall of 2019. All right, now moving to group three, which is operational planning. You can see here with this year being a capital improvement plan year, we are going to have on March the 8th, Lisa Stingle and her team will be bringing forward the Arlington Facility student and accommodation plan, but that's really looking at projections and capacity. We will then bring as an information item and then an action item, March the 22nd and then April the 5th, the CIP framework. And so we're kind of using building blocks here to inform the community, then provide them the basis for the CIP framework, and then the board to begin to take action. You can also see in, within this category of operational planning, we've got a strategic plan. We had a very productive strategic plan meeting, by the way, this past weekend. We're continuing to move forward with the mission, vision, and core values, as well as beginning to outline some goals. So you should be looking for some more information coming out for your input and reaction to the work the committee has done. And then our next steering committee here is slated for the end of February. And then final, finally, in this category or group, we've got the presentation of the proposed budget coming up next Thursday, that's the 22nd, followed by a work session afterwards, and I mentioned also the county manager is presenting his budget on Saturday, and the county will also advertise their tax rate at that point in time, so they'll be looking at that as well. Moving on to group number four with our capital initiatives, with the Reed Building, you can see the items that we've addressed and accomplished to date. February, the building level and the PFRC groups are meeting, and they're looking at the reviewing traffic and parking. We are also looking at the construction manager at risk, awarding that contract, and then this is going to be coming to the board in March for acting on the concept design. With the Career Center here, we've got the Career Center Working Group with their work underway. Ms. Toledo is the school board liaison and passing along a lot of vital information here, but that group is going to be meeting here. It's already started meeting, but through August, and then also be looking to come forward with some plans or input later this spring. And then finally, with the Educational Center, we are moving forward with architectural selection in 2018, and then the building level planning committee process to begin after the architecture selection. This is another example of one of those activities that is linked here to the strategic plan. So coming off the strategic plan toward the end of June, we'll be looking at what the instructional focus for this particular building will be. So you get a pretty good idea of the number of things that are going on. The schedule is very full. I will continue to point to the success that we've had with the Engage website page. It really provides kind of an update. It provides one-pagers. It gives you milestones. It also gives you deadlines and decision-making points, and staff has been working diligently as different events and activities occur to update that information. So I will stop there. I'll just remind everyone, kind of focusing back on this sort of pocket guide to where we are, again noting some of these dates have adjusted or slipped, and that's fine. That's what happens, I'm told, when you have good plans, but we, I think, are on target to get there with many of the milestones that we have in place.
Thank you very much, Dr. Murphy. Let's first, before we go to board questions, do we have speakers?
We have one speaker on this topic, Mr. Josh Fob.
Okay.
My name is Josh Fob, and for this topic, I am speaking exclusively as a parent of an autistic child in Arlington Public Schools. And I was reviewing the notes for this one. I decided to come up and speak on seeing that the inclusion would be brought up as policy discussion. And as I was listening to the speakers tonight, the one that probably broke my heart the most of all of the stories was the parent who kept her child in Stratford even though maybe that wasn't the best choice because of her lack of faith, at least is what sounded to me, that it could be done properly somewhere else in APS. As a parent who talks to other parents in Arlington Public Schools of children with disabilities, there are also schools that I would not want my child to go into. And if anyone believes that inclusion is done countywide perfectly, very well, or even evenly, that is fanciful at best. As long as the principal remains the ultimate arbiter of what does or does not occur in a building, uneven, imperfect, and discriminatory practices will continue in this school system. I am thrilled to see the beginning of the discussion of policies for inclusion will be occurring in the coming months and years, and hopefully to see that inclusion, whether you go to a school in any one of the 222s, will have a truly inclusive experience. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see if, board colleagues, do you have questions? Ms. Van Dorn?
Thank you very much, Dr. Cannon. My question is to Dr. Murphy. On slide five, you noted that we would turn to a policy on inclusion, and I really appreciate doing that, as you know, and I wanted to bring attention to the community that in the 2017-18 school board priorities, we called out two specific policies that needed to be addressed this year. One was the one-to-one technology initiative, and the second was inclusion. I know that there has been conversation about this, and I know that at a very high level, as you noted, behind the scenes, there has been work on embedding that conversation throughout all that we're doing, and I very much appreciate that. What we need to do, though, and I've said this repeatedly, and I want to request it, that we need to have a public place for this conversation, because inclusion needs different things for different people. And in order to do this well, we're going to have to take everybody in the community along with us. We need a common understanding of what it is. We need to dedicate, I personally would like to see this school board dedicate itself to full inclusion and supporting that, and I would like us to say that and write it. And I'd like that conversation to be public, and again, to take everybody with us, because it's not just going to take support on behalf of the students who have differing abilities and disabilities, but it's also going to take the support of the parents whose kids are not in that category. It's going to take everybody's support, but it really has to be out front and it has to include everybody. So I'd like to, I support your notion that this is going to revolve around and include community engagement, and it will maybe be a good start, and I just really want to support that, but I would ask that when we come back, can we have some dates and timelines around that? This is a difficult topic, and it's difficult for people to talk about. It goes near and dear to people's hearts. When you have a child with a disability, you don't get to plan. It happens. You don't get to say, "Well, maybe I'll do that next year or the following year," or "We'll get around to it when we have time and money." That baby's in your lap, and you're dealing with your child, and you're supporting your child, and that is why we hear so much emotion around this, because it's not an option for the people who come to speak with us. So I'm very sensitive to that and aware of it, and I would like to see us move on this. In 2010, I began work on the evaluation of, the first evaluation ever of our special education programs, and the second highest recommendation was on inclusion, and that was six years ago. So I know that our intentions are good, but I'd like us to put some timelines to that, and I think that's exactly why the school board put this on as a priority. So my request is that we put some dates on this, and that we do have that public conversation in a structured way so we can bring the community along and to support you, and to support the staff, and to support the principals and the teachers, because everybody's going to have to be supportive of this, and thank you for moving this along.
Good.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Let's go on to our next monitoring item then, which is an update on graduation requirements. Dr. Murphy?
Yes, I see Dr. Nattress making her way over here in regards to the Virginia graduation requirements. I also know that we have Ty Bird coming over to talk a little bit about an update on the new graduation requirements for those individuals who will be entering high school next fall as freshmen, and I think the news is very positive here. I also think we see sort of a sea change beginning to happen around standardized testing and how students can demonstrate their knowledge, which I think is very, very positive. And I also want to note that there's a number of things that are already in place here in Arlington that we're blessed to have and fortunate that we have in place as far as some of the experiences that we provide students outside the classroom that really support these graduation requirements. So with that as a little bit of a backdrop, I'll turn to Dr. Nattress, and she can take it from here.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy. Good evening again. This evening, we are going to share some information with you about the Virginia graduation requirements. Some of this will look familiar. We started this conversation and brought a couple of things forward last year around the profile of a graduate and some of the potential things that Virginia was looking to do, and those things are no longer potential. So Mr. Bird, our Director of Secondary Education, is going to speak to you about the shifts that will be occurring for students who are entering in the fall of 2018. So that's very soon, right, seeing as how we're close to March already? And we do want to make note, and I'm sure he'll reiterate this, that this is for students who will be freshmen in the fall of 2018. It does not impact students who are currently at the high school level. He's going to talk some about different credit requirements and things. Those will be the same for everyone who is currently at the high school level. We just want to make sure that people know that, because there sometimes is, "Oh, this is changing, and I'm a senior." What does that mean? It's not for the seniors. All right? So Mr. Bird will speak to that quite a bit more than I have.
Thank you, Dr. Nattress. Good evening, everyone. And as usual, on behalf of my colleagues at the Department of Teaching and Learning, the teachers we support across Arlington County, and the children that we serve, thank you for your service. School board, really appreciate it. So let's talk a little bit about what's going to happen with regard to graduation. Beginning in about 2014, the Board of, the Virginia Board of Education began to engage the consumers of Virginia high school graduates. Business leaders, college admissions officers, and military recruiters offered their insight into the current status of the young people they encountered as potential employees, students, or enlistees. The board learned that while many of them have advanced technical skills and content knowledge, knowledge, many of them needed to develop the essential soft skills required for success in the workplace and the post-secondary environment of today. In response to the guidance from the state, the APS has begun the important work of ensuring that our educators continue to offer high-quality content instruction across all curricular areas and that we do so in ways that make explicit connections to life after graduation. The new requirements include a reduction in the number of standards of learning assessments required for each diploma and the implementation of the profile of the Virginia graduate. What's that? The new requirements consist of four major components. The profile of the Virginia graduate, the five Cs, career exploration and planning, and standard and verified credits. These new requirements go into effect in the fall of 2018 and will be used to determine the graduation status for students graduating in the year 2022. The profile of the Virginia graduate communicates the knowledge, skills, experiences, and attributes that students must develop to successfully contribute to the global economy, global community, excuse me, as post-secondary students or members of the workforce. A life-ready Virginia graduate will acquire content knowledge and develop workplace skills with the expectation that they will actively engage their community and dutifully fulfill their civic responsibilities throughout their life. APS students will be exposed to career planning in a purposeful, structured, and coordinated way to ensure that every child will serve as an accurate -- has an accurate awareness of how their personal skills and interests match various career opportunities. Success in the 21st century classroom and workplace requires much more than content mastery and a diverse set of technical skills. We have learned from representatives from various post-secondary entities that our children need to have an extensive understanding of and appreciation for five critical competencies. The Department of Teaching and Learning has already begun to the work of ensuring that the competencies of critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, and citizenship are embedded in our curriculum across the spectrum of courses that we offer. APS is well-positioned for this opportunity and challenge. Dr. Murphy and the executive leadership team have provided our educators with the guidance and resources needed to begin the important process of preparing the children we serve for the opportunities of their generation. We have already begun to expose our elementary-age students to the 16 clusters ranging from architecture, excuse me, agriculture, food, and natural resources to transportation, distribution, and logistics, and everything in between. We are especially excited by the inclusion of education and training, which will help us inspire the next generation of great educators. During the middle school years, we will begin the purposeful investigation of individual skills and interests. Students will complete a career inventory, interest inventory, and select a career cluster pathway. Sarah Putnam, our newly-minted Director of Curriculum Instruction, is already working with our curriculum supervisors to embed the Career Investigations Course curriculum requirements throughout our 6th through 8th grade course offerings. We will kick the process into high gear in high school, where the students will begin to actively participate in work service-based learning through the use of actual workplace exposure. Each of our high schools currently offers seniors opportunities to self-select internships and begin to learn more about their chosen career path. We are fortunate that Arlington has so much to offer in this regard. This chart illustrates the career exploration and planning elements we expect to address and our current status regarding each. We are currently addressing the exploration of different occupations associated with the career clusters at the elementary level through the use of Dream, Explore, Create, and Create Your Own Path program, as well as counseling lessons. Middle school students continue to engage the Dream, Explore, and Create Your Own Path program and are also introduced to Naviance. A component of Naviance is a career entrance inventory, which helps students select a career cluster pathway. In high school, students have access to career and technical education courses at each of the comprehensive high schools, and this is especially true at Arlington Tech. So the nuts and bolts. There have been no changes to the number of standard credits needed to earn either a standard or advanced studies diploma. Standard credits, which are awarded for successful completion of high school credit-bearing courses, the students will continue to need 22 standard credits for a standard diploma and 26 standard credits for an advanced studies diploma. That will not change. There have been changes made to the number of verified credits needed for both standard and advanced studies diplomas. Verified credits are awarded by earning a passing score on an SOL or other accepted assessment. Beginning with the incoming class of freshmen, students in the fall of 2018, students pursuing either a standard or advanced studies diploma will need to have five verified credits. This represents a reduction of one for the standard diploma and a reduction of four for the advanced studies diploma. So we are excited about this new approach to teaching and learning. We believe adherence to these requirements will help us prepare the children we serve for success again in their generation. Thank you. Thank you.